The Village Appeals Park Council Meeting for Monday, April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Manager Bing, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Polk.
Correct.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patain.
Here.
Mayor Millich Walters.
President, let's please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular council meeting for March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. I seek a motion to approve it. There are no changes or corrections.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second. Manager Bing, please call the roll.
Certainly. Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes.
Recognition, proclamations, and appointments and presentations. We're going to proclaim May fourth through May tenth, two thousand and twenty-five Municipal Clerks Week to acknowledge and honor all that our municipal clerks do. Moving on to the appointments of two people to the Peels Park Library Board of Trustees. Bing would like us to appoint John Friar to fill the vacancy with a term to expire June first, two thousand and twenty-six, and Reeine Cato to fill the vacancy beginning June first, two thousand and twenty-five with a term to expire June first, two thousand and twenty-nine. Seek a motion to approve their appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second. Manager Bing, please call the roll.
Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes. We have no hearings listed on the agenda. Moving to the consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda are routine or membroled forward at the direction of the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted with one motion. If discussions decide that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. A. To approve the annual renewal contract from Civic Plus in the amount of six thousand five hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-five cents for website hosting support and forty-eight month website redesign. Item B. To adopt ordinance twenty-two-five dash zero-five and ordinance amending part four title A, chapter four, eighty-two, sections four eighty-two point oh five and four eighty-two point zero eight of the Peels Park Village Code in regard to commuter line daily and monthly parking fees. The ordinance states that the municipal line commuter fees as a dollar fifty for daily parking and thirty dollars for a monthly pass. Item C. To approve payment of invoices on the warrant list dated April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five in the amount of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and twenty-one cents. And item D. To approve the supplemental warrant list dated April fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five for manual checks, payroll, and recurring wire transfers in the amount of one million, thirty-two thousand, eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. Seek a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Your motion is second. Manager Bing, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Thank you. There are no items of old business listed on the agenda, nor are there board commissioning committee recommendations. So moving on to information and updates. Public Works and Streets and Recreation Report, Commissioner Patain.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things on our agenda this evening. The first one is to approve the award of a bid for the one hundred and twenty-third water main relocation. A little background, the Illinois Department of Transportation will be reconstructing two box culverts that carry Mill Creek under the one hundred and twenty-third street, just west of Ninety-third Street and just west of Elm Street starting this May. This reconstruction will cause one hundred and twenty-third street to be closed to traffic in this area for approximately six months. Due to the changing size and depth of the new culverts, the village will have to relocate their water main at each location. This relocation will be at the cost of the village and is part of a requirement in all IDOT permits for utility work in IDOT right-of-ways. So over the past two years, the village has worked with IDOT and Hancock Engineering to produce plans to relocate village water main in these two locations. Hancock completed plans, specifications, and bidding documents, and bids were received on April ninth of two thousand and twenty-five at ten a.m. Six contractors were contacted about this project, but only two, Spees and Aries, chose to submit bids. Spees submitted a bid of six hundred and thirty-two thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars, and Aries submitted a bid of five hundred and eighty-nine dollars and one hundred and thirty-two dollars. Both contractors are qualified to do work and have worked in the village. Public Works has budgeted six hundred thousand dollars over two budget years for the work. Public Works recommends awarding the project to Aries Construction. This project will start once IDOT road closure is set up, saving the village any traffic control costs. Based on information that we provided by IDOT, the anticipated start date is mid-May. And staff recommends awarding the contract to Aries Construction Incorporated. With that, I'd like to make a motion. I move to award the one hundred and twenty-third street water main relocation project to Aries Construction Incorporated in the amount of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay. Manager Bing, would you please call the roll?
Certainly. Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes.
Thank you. For that, and moving on to number two on the agenda, is to approve the partial payment distribution, the fourth one, for the Carthy Road Water Transmission Main. So again, the village has contracted Steve Spees Construction Company to install a new sixteen-inch water transmission main from Holy Family Villa, the property on one hundred and twenty-third street, west of Wilco Road to the west of Bell Road, ending at the Cog Hill property. The contract amount was one million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and eighty-four dollars and eighty cents. Work is continuing on the project, and the fourth payment, fourth partial payment request has been submitted and approved by Baxter and Woodman in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents. The money to pay for the project was budgeted in the water fund and comes from the American Rescue Plan Act and a loan from the IEPA. The six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars from ARP-A, which is American Rescue Plan Act, will be spent first to lessen the amount of the loan. And with that, I move to approve the partial payment distribution, number four, from Steve Spees, sorry, Construction, in the amount of two hundred and six thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-five cents.
I'll second that.
If there's no discussion, Manager Bing, please call the roll.
Commissioner Dan.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes.
Thank you for that. That concludes my Public Works and Streets. Moving on to Recreation News. Just a reminder, well, first of all, I want to say thank you for all those anglers that came out Saturday to Pampus Lake. We had quite a few fishermen, not too many fish this spring, which is kind of a bummer, but that's okay. The weather was beautiful, the lake looked wonderful, so that was always nice. Moving on, Ridd Litter Day will be Saturday, April twenty-sixth. So come here, meet in the morning, and get your supplies, and let's clean up our beautiful village with any little litter that you see from the winter. And then Sunday, May fourth, at the center, is our Arbor Day Celebration. It's the fungus among us. A nice little presentation will take place at the center. Donny Dash is Saturday, May seventeenth, so please sign up for that. It's a five K or a one-mile walk run without your pet. It's always a fun event. Summer Camper's registration is still ongoing. And I know I've already talked to Kimmy, who works at the rec center, and she's, there's plenty of kids already signed up, and she's got so many wonderful things planned and excursions planned for the kids, so please sign up for that. And then Pickleball. Our leagues begin the week of April twenty-eighth. So Tuesday night will be our intermediate and advanced league. Wednesday night will be the beginner league, and Saturday morning will be the all levels league. So please check for that or call the rec center with any questions you have. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Patain. Just want to also thank you and the director, Stephen, and his staff for the wonderful brunch with the bunny that took place also, since we worked here since then. It sold out, and it was fantastic, and the weather was perfect, so it was a really great event. So thank you to you and your team. And also, Ridd Litter Day, like Commissioner Patain said, meet at the rec center nine a.m. They'll give you the gloves, the bag, and your vest to wear, and you'll tell them what street you want to clean up, and let's keep our village beautiful, so thank you again. Moving on to Building and Public Property Report, Commissioner Wade.
Thanks, Mayor. I have a few things for us. I'll first start out with my report. Residents who have an open building permit, if you remember, to call in final inspections that may be required for your project. The purpose of these inspections is to ensure the following. That your project meets building codes, local ordinances, and zoning regulations. Monitor construction sites periodically to ensure overall compliance. Inspect plumbing, electrical, and other systems to ensure that they meet code. Issue violation notices and stop work orders until site is compliant. Please contact the village if you notice any work being done outside work hours. In the permit department, the building department processed twenty-six permits from March eighteenth, April ninth, resulting in thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-six cents. Brings our fiscal year-to-date to two hundred and sixty-four thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-six cents. So that is my report. I also have a couple things for the council. First, ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-six. The Plan Commission is going to assume duties of the Historic Preservation Commission in relieving current Historic Preservation Commission members of their appointments. They haven't met since two thousand and seventeen, so it's not like we're relieving anybody of anything major, but they will be assuming the Historic Preservation Commission, the Plan Commission will be, and they will assume all those responsibilities. Do we have any questions? No, that seems like no brainer. So I move to approve ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-six in ordinance amending part fourteen, title eight, chapters fourteen ninety and fourteen ninety-two, the Peels Park Village Code with regards to the Historic Preservation Commission and amending the composition of said Historic Preservation Commission. And further, that all members currently appointed to the Historic Preservation Commission with either current or expired terms are hereby relieved from their appointments.
I'll second that.
To those who did serve, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
I was just going to say that. Thank you, Commissioner Wade. Thank you to those people that did serve on that commission. Manager Bing, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes.
Thank you, and I have one more. Our building code update, twenty-twenty-one International Code Councils Codes and twenty-twenty National Electric Code. On January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, the Village Council approved entering into an agreement with H.R. Green for purposes of comparing the village's current twenty-twenty-twelve, or excuse me, twenty-twelve building codes with proposed new codes. The twenty-twenty-one ICC codes and the twenty-twenty NEC. This involves identifying primary differences and providing recommendations for amendments to these codes for consideration and approval by the Village Council. H.R. Green has completed this work. They have provided documentation for the village's review. The code update summary is a document, is a summary of significant changes with proposed new building codes as well as suggested tax amendments. Those are definitely on the website. But it's also something that we should do periodically, and we did do that for good reason. Are there any questions?
No, no questions, but I just wanted to make clear that this has nothing to do with the code update rewrite that we've been working on, that we're still going to have another public hearing on. These are things that came down from the national level that we have to comply with, so that's what these are.
Yeah, nothing, yeah. With that, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one ICC and the twenty-twenty NEC codes with local amendments as identified by H.R. Green and to direct the village returning to prepare the necessary ordinance.
Second.
Manager Bing, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Commissioner Polk.
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes.
And finally, on March twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five, the village held a public meeting to discuss the draft of the proposed new development code, which are the village's zoning subdivision regulations with our consulting firm, Camero's. The regularly scheduled Plan Commission meeting of April seventeenth is being canceled. In its place, we will be holding a joint meeting of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals on April seventeenth, seven p.m., right here in this room. The focus of this meeting would be to focus on certain key code items that require additional discussion. The goal would be to have sufficient direction on these key issues to provide direction to the consultant for preparation of a revision that can be used for the formal code adoption process. We encourage anybody in the public who wants to come, please attend. Please contact the building staff regarding the draft development code and the public meeting if you have any questions. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Wade. And again, just to reiterate, if you look at the code online, the proposed one, and you have suggestions or questions, you can email mherman@peelspark.org, and Director Herman will be happy to address those. Otherwise, come here Thursday, like Commissioner Wade said, and that way you can hear what the changes are and give your suggestions if you have any.
Sounds good.
Thank you so much. Moving on to Public Health and Safety Report, Commissioner Mulch.
Thank you, Mayor Millich Walters. Let's start with the Police Activity Report from March thirty-first through April thirteenth. We had nineteen-hundred-and-one calls for service, an additional nineteen citizen assists, wrote seventeen case reports, and unfortunately had four accident reports, arrested two adults, no juvenile arrests, and impounded a vehicle, made eighty-seven traffic stops, twenty-two moving violations, an additional fifty-seven speeding tickets, and nineteen adjudication tickets. So that's what Peels Park Police has been up to since the last couple of weeks.
That's a lot.
Yeah. It's about what we were on.
Yes.
The second thing on my agenda tonight is to approve an ordinance amending part four, title two, chapter four, twenty-eight, multiple sections in regard to seizure and empowerment of motor vehicles. So a little bit of a background information. The Peels Park Police Department charges an administrative tow fee as permitted by state statute. The fee covers the administrative and processing costs associated with investigating, arresting, and detaining offenders or removing, impounding, storing, and releasing impounded vehicles. In two thousand and twenty, the council passed the last increase, which raised the administrative towing fee from a hundred and fifty dollars to three hundred dollars. We're proposing to increase the fee for the village of Peels Park from three hundred to five hundred dollars. This matches the rates that are charged by neighboring communities, the Heights, Peels Hills, La montana, Orland, and Orland Hills. Cook County Sheriff's Police charged seven hundred and fifty dollars. It's of note that in addition to the village's administrative tow fee, the registered owner will also be responsible for any direct towing or storage charges from the towing agency. So my recommendation would be, and I move to approve ordinance two oh-two-five dash oh-seven, and ordinance amending part four, title two, chapter four, twenty-eight, sections four twenty-eight dot oh-four, four twenty-eight dot oh-five, and four twenty-eight dot oh-six of the Peels Park Village Code in regard to seizure, empowerment of motor vehicles, and I'd seek a second.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? If not, Manager Bing.
Commissioner Polk.
Yes.
Commissioner Wade.
Yes.
Commissioner Patain.
Yes.
Mayor Millich Walters.
Yes.
And then I have a couple of quick announcements. The Peels Park Police Department will be monitoring intersections for red light violators during distracted driving awareness month, which continues through April. So April is distracted driving awareness month. Remember to keep your eyes on the road for everybody's safety. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Program, more than three thousand Americans die each year from distracted driving. So we'll be doing our own special enforcement operations this month. We had one on Saturday night to reduce distracted driving. We'll be monitoring specific intersections as well as various stretches of busy roads. And just wanted to let you know that if you see a bunch of us out there, that's what we're doing. And then I wanted to recognize the police department as they've been selected for the two thousand and twenty-four LexiPol Connect Customer Recognition Program that honors police agencies in terms of policy management. So I know that you guys think that all we do is drink coffee and patrol the village, but there is an incredible amount of training that occurs, both ongoing and as new legislation becomes enacted in the state, in the county, in the village. And LexiPol is the group that sort of monitors our compliance with that activity. So we achieved gold-level recognition. There is no platinum or super platinum for it, correct? As part of their recognition program, again, recognizing police agencies across the country, actually, for excellence in policy maintenance and training. So thanks, Chief, for keeping us abreast of what we need to be training people for, and thanks to officers of the Peels Park Police Department for actually having to go through all that training, which is not insignificant. Let's see, what else do I have? I think there's a Coffee with the Cop. Yep. There's Coffee with the Cop at the Flush Horse. We do this regularly. The next one is on Wednesday at eleven a.m. at the Flush Horse. You don't know where it is, ask me. It's, again, starts at eleven. We don't really generally have a general agenda. If you've got something that you want to talk about, or you just want to ask questions, or you just want a good cup of coffee, come by, and we usually generally have a couple of officers there. I think Frank Flores is going to be there on Wednesday, and I will be there. We'll see who else shows up. Chief Miller, anything you can add?
Commissioner, I did one thing that came to light over the weekend. We had two residents show up here Friday and Saturday whose identities had been assumed through the Department of Education's student loan program.
Oh, Lord, yeah.
I didn't even know the Department of Education has an investigative division in the world. This apparently is popping up throughout the country, predominantly with the online universities, which major universities are online now. But a lot of these loans are taken out unbeknownst to the person who has taken the loan, or their name being used.
The additional loans.
And they're now starting to get these credit reports showing they owe University of Phoenix, Rasmunson University, ten thousand dollars for their tuition or something. So I just want to bring it up. We have not seen it before, and it just first went in on Friday night.
So in addition, I mean, we've talked a lot over the years about scamming and people trying to impart you and your well-earned dollars in very creative ways. If you ever have an issue, we have a group of very dedicated officers who specialize in sort of looking at these sort of things. So the easiest thing to do is just drop Chief Miller an email. His email is jmillar@peelspark.org. If you don't want to climb that high on the tree, my email is dvolk@peelspark.org, and we will reach out to you and talk through what the issues are. But again, our services to the community, if you think that there's something amiss that we might be able to help you with, we will certainly take the time to take a look at it, and if we can help you, we will, and if we can't, we'll tell you we can't. So, thanks, Chief. Any other issues? That concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Polk. Moving on to Accounts and Finances Report. Commissioner Reed could not be here this evening. He had a family commitment. So I'm going to ask Director Broden to please address the item on Commissioner Reed's list.
Sure thing. The Village of Peels Park operates under the Budget Act as outlined within the Illinois compiled statutes. As required, the village must adopt an annual budget prior to the start of the fiscal year for which the budget applies. The village's budget represents a financial roadmap used to guide programs, events, services, and projects within the budget year. The village's proposed annual budget for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six, starting on May first, two thousand and twenty-five, ending on April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, is on file in the lobby of the Capra Administrative Center and will be on the village's website under the Finance Department section. A public hearing will be held at our next council meeting on Monday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. Final action on an ordinance to approve the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget is also scheduled at the April twenty eighth council meeting. Village staff has been looking diligently over the last several months on the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six budget. Some of the highlights included in the proposed budget include major improvements in maintenance to water and sanitary sewer systems valued at over a million dollars, nearly one point oh-six million in street paving and maintenance projects. In the police department alone, the budget includes the purchase of two new squad cars and equipment in the amount of one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars, bodywork, care of software, and storage fees in the amount of twenty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, and six ballistic vests in the amount of four thousand, seven hundred and seventy dollars. The budget also includes the purchase of one roadside mowing tractor in the amount of sixty thousand dollars, the purchase of one replacement pickup truck in the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars, and the continuance of our numerous special event offerings. The previously mentioned are just a few examples of investments in our community for this next fiscal year starting May first. Village Council and staff in meticulous work to improve on many of the village's services in fiscal year twenty-six as we look forward to another strong fiscal year.
Thank you so much. Just want to say, you know, it's a balanced budget with a surplus. We always work hard and endeavor to do that and reach that, and thank you, Director, for all your hard work making it happen, and all the department heads who worked tirelessly to make it all work out so we could have this balanced budget. All right, moving on to the mayor's report. I do have one item on the agenda tonight. I will preface this with that Commissioner Reed was probably going to discuss it because it is a finance issue, and he and I've had conversations, and he is in agreement with this, even though he's not here to express it, just so nobody would wonder what he was thinking. Let's see, this is a discussion and direction to create ordinance increasing the non-home rural local sales tax in the amount of point five percent and eliminating the village's vehicle license requirement. Public Act one zero-three dash zero seven eight one, effective on August eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, provides the state's authority for non-home rural municipalities to implement a local sales tax without referendum requirement. This act was codified in section eight dash eleven of the Illinois Municipal Code, which is statute sixty-five ILCS five forward slash eight dash eleven. The law provides that local sales tax may not exceed one percent. Pursuant to a referendum approval back on November second, two thousand and oh-four, and adopted by ordinance in two thousand and oh-four dash fifty-seven, passed on November twenty-second, two thousand and oh-four, the Village of Peels Park currently has a half a percent non-home rural sales, local sales tax in effect. The current half a percent local sales tax generates approximately three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year. To implement any additional local sales tax, the corporate authorities, meaning the village council, must adopt an ordinance. A certified copy of that ordinance must then be submitted to the Illinois Department of Revenue. Ordinance is sent to I D O R between April first and October first, will go into effect January first, twenty-twenty-six. Should the council approve an ordinance implementing the additional half a percent local sales tax, this will have an approximate, uh, for the four months of fiscal year twenty-six budget impact of an additional one hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. The village of Pales Park currently requires residents or those operating a place of business to license its motor vehicles. This is commonly referred to as the vehicle sticker and motorcycle tag program. Its code chapter is four sixty-two under licensing. The village first implemented the vehicle licensing program in nineteen eighty-two. This code section was last amended in two thousand and fourteen. In the twenty-twenty-four, the program, which also includes dog tag revenues, had a net positive impact of eighty-eight thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. Now, this was a decrease from twenty-twenty-three, when we, our revenue impact was ninety-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars, and a further decrease from twenty-twenty-two, when we took in a hundred and four thousand, three hundred and seventy-six dollars. So based on revenues and expenditures, the twenty-twenty-five revenue estimate from vehicle stickers and dog tags is approximately seventy-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. Since the village has experienced a decline in the number of vehicles licensed, it's expected that this trend will continue. So the average cost to license a vehicle, now, it averages at about forty-seven dollars and seventy-four cents, and two vehicles is about ninety-five dollars and forty-eight cents. Now, if you're not a senior, you're paying sixty dollars a vehicle sticker, and if you're a senior, you're paying, uh, forty, forty-two, yeah, close to forty.
For one sticker.
For one sticker. So I just want to put it in perspective and break it down, now that I read all the specifics. If you have two cars, you're supposed to get two vehicle stickers, so that's approximately a hundred dollars that you're paying to the village. The half a percent sales tax, the way it will impact is when you go and you buy an item at the store here in Pales Park, you have to spend two thousand dollars to have the impact of a hundred dollars in tax. So, uh, if you think about it, if you went and paid a hundred dollars for your vehicle stickers, spent two thousand dollars shopping, and now you've paid that a hundred dollars to the village. The other thing is, is you don't have to be a village resident to end up paying sales tax. So other people that come into our town and shop, they would be paying into that sales tax, which is why right now we experience, what did I say it was, about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in the half percent sales tax. By adding another half percent, we expect to experience roughly the same numbers. So, um, I think it's a win for the village in, in a way that we can make sure we have income coming in and not burdening the residents directly for each vehicle when dogs have to pay for those, uh, tax. Council members, do you have any questions, input?
I, I don't have any questions. The Pales Park Police Department has the ability to be able to look at the, uh, number of stickers that are purchased for vehicles, and the number of vehicles that are actually registered in the village of Pales Park. Those numbers don't match up. Follow along, sir.
Well, in this case, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move to authorize the creation of an ordinance to increase the non-home rural sales tax by half percent, and another ordinance to repeal the provisions of Chapter four sixty-two licensing of motor vehicles in the village. I can't make the motion. Duh. Could somebody please make that motion that I just said?
So, uh, I'll move to authorize the creation of an ordinance to increase the non-home rural sa- sales tax by point five percent, and yet another ordinance to repeal the provisions of Chapter four sixty-two licensing of motor vehicles in the village of Pales Park and the Super Center.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second. Manager Bane, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Polk?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Mayor Millich Walters?
Yes, and that concludes my actual report. There is no clerk's report, so we move on to Manager Bane, he has one item on the agenda.
I'm seeking a continuance on this matter of the village's roofs and gutters to next meeting, if both agree with it. We believe that there does, we should have a dis- in order for the village council to consider this matter again, uh, and with the pricing and so forth with Irma for every race, we are okay. Can you continue for this time?
Somebody want to do that? Yeah, I'll, uh, I'll move to continue, uh, the matter of replacement of the village building roofs and gutters until Irma has approved cost modifications to April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, at the next village council meeting.
I'll second that.
Your motion is second. Manager Bane, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yep.
Mayor Millich Walters?
Yes, anything else, Manager Bane?
I have nothing else.
All right. Announcements, the Recreation Advisory Board will hold their quarterly meeting on Tuesday, April fifteenth, tomorrow at seven p.m. at the Recreation Center, and the Library Board will hold their regular meeting on Wednesday, April sixteenth, at five p.m. at the library, so that new member that was appointed can now show up. Now, moving on to Citizens and Visitors Comment Period, would anybody from the audience like to address the council? Seeing no takers at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn them.
Motion.
Second.
Your motion is second. Manager Bane, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Patan?
Yes.
Commissioner Wade?
Yes.
Commissioner Polk?
Yeah, I'll second the motion to adjourn.
Yes, thank you, everyone, have a good evening.